I heard you probably smell the other day and then realized that your lot's name wrong.
Rabafa?
Rabafa?
Oh, yeah. Have you been?
Rabufa.
So you must do it fair. Everyone's.
Well, because that's the way it's Italian, right?
Including the Italian, yeah. I spent my whole life correcting people until I met someone that was Italian. Yeah, I say Rabafa. Yeah, that's why I was following.
Well, however you could do this.
I say, yeah. Fatigue.
So I was reading jokes in the back of American Legion magazine and one of them says, "Isn't it interesting? Doesn't it make you wonder about the FDA when they approve chats for the coronavirus one day and then they discuss having chocolate on spros the next day?" S'mores.
Is that controversial? Chocolate on s'mores?
Putting chocolate on s'mores the next day.
I don't have keys to my office and I wonder if I lose a parent and not the message. Does it affect them? Won't see something happen.
I may have key to your office.
Really?
Yeah, you can have the.
Great. I don't have my wallet. Thank you.
Actually, how did she come?
Yeah, now it's okay. I think we're just gonna skip it. Alan, thank you, Ellen.
Can't sneak in there.
No. No, you can't sneak into my office either. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Hi, good to meet you.
I'm Heather.
The, the.
They actually said.
Oh, okay.
You still have the choice?
No.
Thank you so much.
Not this week.
So you'll be second up. Here's the agenda if you'd like.
Next week. Should've. Edit the training. And I'm just like, felt so.
Follow along if you want.
Putting a lot of old tools at school, but a period of.
It's all there.
And a tool, maybe $150,000 I can go.
This is now the subdivision project?
Extreme.
That we've got at a workshop?
Chips. So this is on the, soon you can't see it from the throughie.
Sorry about the.
Center for now technology size and next era. That's what we're sort of.
Yeah, maybe you stand up the book. Is it weird?
No, it makes sense. I'm, I'm, I keep thinking.
Flashing by and then it's on application or something. It's 2 million. It's incredibly small.
Huh.
And they're doing that up there? Oh, yeah. That was one of the things that were pushed through and this, this number one guy was.
This is subdivision?
Like, down the arrows.
I can think more of here than this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't I do that?
It's fun, but it's complex.
Is that a paper do that?
Yeah.
I'll do subdivision on this table and I'll bring a shotgun.
Or indeed, or indeed, but they'll do proof of concept.
Because the four acts that a lot of the.
They had about 80 tools that they were testing last time. Now they're moving that into the.
We're going to back these other maps they took out, so.
Huge. Point in Arizona.
One minute.
More than one. Yes, Intel is huge in Arizona.
Huge in Tidias.
Intel, Intel Micron, Texas.
I sent the kids to school and asked you to get a big, so.
They're like those, I don't know what they're making, Latin areas, Mexico, Texas, Arizona. Sure. And, uh, these things, you know, it's, this is the trip short. Why you keep flying cars?
Yes.
So this company will behave. There's silicon. It looks like silicon. No problem with it. It's like looking for standing. Those crap that makes it sound like a good project is perfect. Of course.
I've been doing some research for the last two weeks.
All right, we're gonna begin the meeting. We rise for the flags.
This is not easy. I want to get a fair chair here.
My allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, Rabafa?
Um, here.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Powell?
Here.
John Horn?
Here.
Uh, sorry, Alan Shiner?
Here.
Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Welton?
Here.
This is a November 10th regular planning board meeting. Everyone have a chance to look over the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept this review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you guys want to jump right into Shandaken Inn review?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Do you want to switch the order and do communications after both applicants? Which is fine.
Well, might as well, they don't have to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Great. All right, so you're recusing yourself. Sam Spad is the interim chair.
Can I remind me, today's action is to see if we're ready to go to public hearing next month?
Uh, yeah, and referral to county and the EAF should be looked at as well.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Nadine Curry from peak engineering. Um, so just a quick recap, I'm sure you all remember, um, the Shandaken Inn, facility expansion, proposed four rental cabins and spa facility. So when we spoke at the workshop meeting, some of the items that we talked about for additional information was getting some images of what the cabins would look like, getting the information on the lighting, that's been submitted. Also, the part of this application is a lot consolidation. There are three separate tax parcels, um, single ownership and join each other that were combined into one. So we provided the survey map that shows that and, um, I'm sure we can talk about a little bit more of that process moving forward. And, um, since we met last, we have submitted applications to the Ulster County Health Department and New York City DEP for the wastewater improvements that we have to do on the site and had them out on the site, so we're working with them on that. Um, it's come to my attention that, um, we will need to go to the DEP, uh, no, I'm sorry, to the DC because they have a speedies on the sanitary system that's there. So we have to file an amendment for the second outfall. So then follow the agencies at this point, the county health department, the DC and the DEP. And, um, and then of course the interest of the agency appeals to county planning board. So it's getting, getting more complicated every bit.
But you're getting closer.
Getting closer. And in conversations with, um, the DEP, we did submit with this plan, um, improvements to the access drive that's there because it's very narrow, it's like 10 feet wide. So with the addition of the cabins, we're proposing to widen it to 15 feet. And, um, basically the parking areas, the pull offs by the cabins, um, active can turn around areas, so you guys can take a look at that and see if you have any comments on that. And we did provide a soil erosion control plan, which at this point now, it's been determined that we have to submit that to the DEP for stormwater front because apparently it's in the hamlet of Shandaken, that property's in the hamlet. So we've got all that to work out.
What's the zoning, Sarah, for this area?
Um. Oh my gosh, I was just taking it earlier.
It's AR3.
Thank you.
It's an R3?
AR3, yes.
AR3s. What's the minimum lots size of AR3?
Um, it's.
Three.
One and a half acres.
Yeah, acres, okay.
It's one and a half acres. And we do have a density calculation because of the commercial.
So the minimum is one and a half acres?
It's one and a half acres.
So none of the parcels are below the minimum?
No.
Okay.
And then combining them, it comes out like 12.5, somewhere around there. And then because of these are different uses, cabins have their own minimum requirements and everything, so we did provide a density calculation on, on the plan that kind of outlines that there's more than enough over there.
So this is among the new material, right?
Right, so they've got two separate little cabin options there, um, I think it's fairly preliminary.
So it's either, this isn't either or?
Um, or maybe they're mixing them, I'm not really sure. Um, they're working with an architect and I think they're almost like a free spa company, so.
Is this the spa or is it a little too old?
No, and I don't know. They missed that they were cabin options, so I don't know if one of them, the spa would look the same or just kind of similar. Um, I think it's all meant to kind of look like homes, basically. And I need clarification because these plans show, uh, a foundation unless you, and I don't know if they are going to put it on piers or actually have a crawl space.
This is a crawl space and it looks like it is, uh, not the spa, just another cabin.
Just a cabin, yeah. So I think both of these are, are what they have so far in the cabins that they're looking at too. I do know that they've indicated to me that, I mean, obviously we're doing the whole master plan for everything here, we're gonna do that with the sanitary and, you know, the other agencies, but I do believe that they're considering only putting in two to three cabins initially and then down the line doing the other cabinet and the spa, so I don't think it's something that they're gonna do.
But they're asking for all up front?
All up front because, you know, I told them with Seeker and the health department and stormwater, it's just gonna all accumulate anyway. We have to go through it anyway.
So, um, please, anybody, but, uh, I don't see the height of the buildings. It's always a good thing for us to have. I don't think that they're gonna exceed anything, but we shouldn't have to do the match. Let us know what it is from the average.
Yeah, and we can definitely add that because I know I'm, uh, here, we just said that it would be less than 35, but we can definitely add that.
Any questions?
So these are, these are intended to be for transient use only, not? Correct. Correct.
This road coming from the main building and into here?
Yes.
This is blacktop now or it will be?
It is. Um, I know there's some areas that are labeled gravel in there and there are some that are labeled blacktop, but it is blacktop all the way up now.
Just, just from a zoning, is that the road that you said you were widening?
Yes.
Um, the fi, it's a fire apparatus road as well, it's a fire, it's, I think the minimum's 20 feet.
20?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, and I wasn't sure because it was kind of like an internal and the.
Uh, I see.
Definitely wasn't, wasn't clear.
It has to be that the trucks can pass each other.
Yeah.
On the road, even though you have this turnaround here.
Okay, so 20?
Yeah.
Yep, we can definitely make that up. All right.
So let's sort of point to the other members of the board. So I'm looking at the set here that's in orange and I'm looking at the plans.
This one?
Yeah, looking at that and I'm looking at the plan looks like that. And it's Nadine, right?
Yeah.
So this looks like a home.
Yeah, so.
It's got everything there, it's got, this is a full kitchen, so I guess maybe it's extended stay, but is there a plan down the road to go cottage here or something? It's, it don't look like the typical cottage that I see is associated with an inn that has all the services that you need.
Yeah.
I am honestly not 100% sure how they're gonna finally furnish this. I do know that they were looking to have, um, two bedrooms in each cottage. I don't know if they're gonna put in full, full kitchens or not. Um, they sent these to me saying that they are, you know, these are the cabins that they're looking at, there's nothing set in stone, I don't think these are the plans that they submit to the building department, so, you know, we can see. I know that when we're doing the sanitary, um, we're not taking any reduction for no kitchen, you know, we're still, it's still based on just the regular per bedroom occupancy, which always includes kitchens, so, um, as far as the engineering aspect, it doesn't affect. But they didn't mention, you know, I, I do know that it's for short term rentals, if not for long term. Yeah, you know, and maybe there'd be extended stays beyond a week, maybe two.
That's what I was just gonna say.
You know, but.
A week or something, maybe.
Yeah. But I don't think, um, I, well, I know it's not for year round, full time residents. It's gonna be a transient head thing.
So I'm just gonna suggest that whenever we get to the point of taking an action, I'd like to see that memorialized because this looks like a home.
Very nice looking.
Yes, well done.
They've got a detailed kitchen plan at the bottom of the floor plan with all the cabinets in place and, and the fixtures and everything. Yeah, like I said, I think these are kind of, um, almost like modular units, you know, so.
This is in the shelves, uh.
Type of thing, right, right. And I don't, just want to say that they can't make changes or, or things like that, but, you know, the plans that they submitted are basically, you know, this is.
Yeah, I understand the concern that I'm expressing has to do with the land use.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Truly the planning, how, what they do in there, how they build it is, is secondary right now. What I'm looking at right now, I want to make sure that we're not accidentally back during the opportunity for somebody to sell these houses.
Right.
Or condos.
Right, and I do know that, um, I mean, that should always be, we can memorialize that with notations on the plans for sure. Um, there is the one, and I have to say there's kind of an error, which, um, is in, in your favor for zoning, but there's a home on the site now that is, um, employee lives there now, yes. And I thought there were two homes, but the other structure's just a garage, so it's, or density includes another home, but it's not even there, it's just a.
The, the home you're speaking of has an open building permit recent, as of recent, and our building inspector has just recently been in it.
Right, they're doing renovations.
They're doing renovations to that one.
And somebody does live in there full time who, um, is an employee for the inn.
It's ancillary to the inn.
Yeah, yeah, but these are not intended for any type of employee residence or housing or anything like that, they're intended to be.
These lots are all gonna be combined?
Correct.
So there's no chance of, of selling them as a condo? They have to be on their own lot. This is all gonna be on one big lot?
They're all on one lot.
And they aren't gonna have shared sanitary and water supply?
And they're booked through the Shandaken Inn, like housekeeping, room service, all that, right?
Yes, yes. Okay. Okay.
So Sarah, are there two separate actions? Is it one for the lot combination?
I don't think you have to make that action. You have to see it for minutes, right? Isn't that where the route?
Yes.
Yeah, you see it, so sometimes they just go straight to county and do it themselves, but this way we have it recorded in history that we've known that this has happened to this lot. But other than that, that's separate and then.
So you guys don't need to sign it then, there's no approval, we'll just go through the county form for lot consolidation?
That's what we're hearing.
It's not like a lot line with a.
I know, I've gotten objections to that, right?
No. It would just, it would be a merger.
It is, yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I looked at their form and I think they can only file it between January and March or something like that. It's a very strange.
Yeah.
Thing, or only through March, I don't even know.
Right, right, it happens like this part of the year.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I don't know if we'll get through a final approval before then, but it can always be a condition and then once we have that filed, we will give it to Sarah and then.
I think that's for tax purposes.
Like, yeah, the censors will get it, they'll get it from county, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, great.
Okay.
So what do we need to do? Is this a special permit because it's a residential, but it's already existing special permit because they flip-flop a few years back from residential back to the inn and that's, so what's there is, what do we need to do to move this forward?
Well. Seeker?
Seeker.
We gotta do seeker?
You have to determine.
Yes, and I, I don't see any significant impact on this.
Did we do the EAF list, the short form?
Uh, I don't know that you all went through it as a checklist, no.
Is it one you're first to look at now?
Yeah, and the application.
And I, what I've requested of the board, only because of these other agencies and what we're, we're now dealing with, with, um, the DEP, is that, um, it becomes an unlisted action with a coordinated review that the board would request to be lead agency, there intend to be lead agency, and then it gets circulated to, to the other agencies. I mean, we're gonna need their approvals anyway, but this way we don't have to wait for them to do the secret review.
Yeah.
So they respond to you and that's it, or they don't.
Think about that, okay, I do. Right, lead agency? Yeah, we do lead agency. Yes, that's fine. This is, I'm, I'm looking at this as one project. Right. You know, and it's all confined, uh, confined in the meets and bounds of the property and all the, all the review agencies that want to take place.
It's an extension of the use that's in existence.
Yeah.
It's, it's an actual natural extension of their business plan and by getting rid of smaller lots and combining into one, I think that's a good thing.
Yes, I do too.
So we're, we're inclined not to feel that we need a seeker for this?
We, well, let me think about this.
Because I, I still remember seeing this short form, is it here somewhere? You got it?
Yeah, I have, I have.
It came in the original. That was at a workshop though, so it depends on what we have.
They put in with the sep, whatever the date of that is, September submission?
Do we want to go through this?
Right now?
Um, what do you think?
Do I have that in the application?
I think you just said this is the original, the only one we have, or will this come to us in a?
No, it came to you with the.
Kate, you all had it. It's the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do have it.
Yep.
Yeah, I have it right here, I'm holding it.
So do, do you have the, um, correspond?
I don't have it.
Dated, uh, September?
This? No, I would've left it here.
Okay, well, here it is, you want this copy?
Okay.
Then that's one. Sure, and you have the second one?
Yeah, I have another one to suggest.
Yeah, I'll see it in here, okay, happens.
Here's another one. Through this side.
Somebody need another copy?
I don't have one.
Oh, Joanne needs one.
I don't have one.
You want to share with you?
Here, Jo, Jo, you share it, Jo.
Fill this out or this is already filled out, okay.
The applicant fills it out.
Yeah, this is, we'll fill that already, all we have to do is.
Yeah, it's for your review.
You want to just go down this and we'll just, yes, 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 and no, no, no?
Um, I'm okay with that because they've, because they've given their, somebody's given their checks here, so we can just see if we concur.
Yes.
Okay, did you want to do the reading?
Do I or you?
I don't care, I can read. Do I read every word? Does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? Applicant has said no, anybody disagree? Two, does the proposed action require permit approval of funding from any other agency? The answer is yes. New York City DEP, county health, wa, wa, water and wastewater? Okay, that's a yes.
I mean, if you wanted, we can just add the DC in there, but.
DC's, that's new.
Yeah.
And that's the state DEC, DEP is New York City. What's DEC have in this? Permeable surfaces.
No. It's the wastewater because the existing facility is over 1,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
And then, um, this may be over 1,000, so we'll have to add an outfall to their existing speedes permit.
Okay, .3 is the total acreage, 12.5. Land uses, forest, commercial, residential, suburban. I guess residential has to be checked because it's a hotel?
Um, well, this is for.
Oh, are you anywhere near, sorry?
The adjoining properties, yeah.
Okay, is it a permitted use on the zoning regulations? They've checked off yes, and I think that's true with a special permit, consistent with adoptive comprehensive plan, yes. Proposed action consistent with predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes. Is the site located in or adjoining a state listed critical environmental area? No, I think that's true. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present, present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action?
No.
Well, isn't that a bike route 28, that's why they have the white shoulder?
Well, there is public transportation on 28 too, you could say no there.
UCAT, yeah.
I mean, yes, there.
Should we ask, should we do that?
Is there, are there bus stops?
I don't think, it doesn't make it.
Are there bus stops near?
They'll stop, just.
You kind of flag them.
Whenever you ask them.
If you're standing there, there'll stop.
Yeah.
So I think, I think there are transportation services available.
So I would say they would yes.
Yeah, should be a yes.
So should we move those both over to yes, bicycles and?
For eight, for eight B and eight C should be yeses. Because there is a bicycle route 28, that's what it's for, the wide shoulder, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Nine, does proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? New buildings will confirm at all applicable energy code requirements provide water conserving plumbing features, so that's a yes. I believe that's correct. Will proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply?
Yes.
Yes. Will the action connect to existing wastewater utilities? No. Does the site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on the national or state register of historic places or that has been determined by the commission of New York State Office of Parks, Chapeau, to be eligible for listing on the state register? The answer is no. And is the project site any portion located adjacent to an area designated as sensitive by Chapeau? No, I think that's correct.
But we, we did include the crisis map in the back.
Thirteen, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining contain wetlands or water bodies regulated by federal, state and local agency? The answer is yes. Where, is it on the 12.5 acres, the wetland?
So there's no, um, wetland, but there is a, um, pond and that's, uh, I call it drainage channel, but it is like a, a minute stream that comes through here.
Right.
This pond and this for the water bodies.
Is that a permanent pond?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I was there the other night, okay.
Yep.
Um, so that's a yes. If yes, identify the wetland or water body and extent of alterations. I don't think you, you didn't add anything in there.
There were no alterations at all.
No alterations, okay. Because 13B said no, no alterations. Because thirteen B said no. No alterations. Okay, continuing on, fourteen. Typical habitat types that occur are likely to be found shoreline because of the Aesopus, forest, and early mid succession for that forested area here, I'm guessing.
Uh huh.
Okay. Does the site or proposed action contain any species of animal? Yes, bald eagle. Is the project?
We don't know if there's any nesting ring on the site, just because it's proximity to the creek.
Yes, yeah. They don't like to get too close to homes. Is the project site located in the one hundred year floodplain?
Yes.
It's a yes, yeah. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Yes. If yes, will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties? Yes. Will stormwater discharges be directed to established convenience systems runoff and storm drains? We got a yes there. If yes, briefly described. So tell us more about surface water runoff.
I mean, basically, because of this site and where it is, wherever these structures are, they will have gutters. The gutters will go to an undisturbed area on the ground, but then from there, it's drained to wherever the natural drainage is. So some of them may drain to that creek I was talking about from the pond, and some may just drain across the site and back down.
But drain, they're going below grade, like a trench, a French drain or something like that? They're getting into the water table?
Typically gutter drains just daylight somewhere away from structure itself.
So they'll hit a splash block and, okay. Eighteen, does proposed action include construction or other activities that will result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Answer was no. Has a site at the proposed action or journey property been the location of active or closed solid waste management? No. Has the site of action or adjoining property been subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. Okay. So that's a sure environmental assessment form. What does the board think?
What is the significance of the big and the hundred year floodplain? I mean, obviously, there is an establishment there already.
Well, just from the building standpoint, you're not building in the hundred year.
Correct. They're well outside.
Nothing new going in any floodplain at all, hundred year, five hundred year, nothing.
So that's, but there is, but that was true.
I'm talking about the site.
Yes, for a part of the site, but not anywhere near where they're building.
Correct.
All right, I think that's pretty well filled out. We have the site plan and everything.
Not seeing any major impacts here. So based on what we've just looked at the EAF, it's our opinion that a seeker action is probably not required?
Well, according to this, the short form, we can use and say it's a non-significant impact.
Well, the only, the only thing is, if you, if you don't do a coordinated review with all these other agencies, they will each need to do their own review.
So you're hoping that they, you're hoping for?
You will help the project.
But we can take lead agency. We can go through this and take lead agency.
So if you, if you just type it as an unlisted action, because if it was a type one, there could be some partial, like, a stored building next to it. A type two, it wouldn't need any action at all. So it would be an unlisted action, and if you deem it a coordinated review and take lead agency, that would be great. And you don't have to make a decision on significance tonight because you're gonna have to wait to hear back from everybody else anyway. But I don't think anybody else's comments or concerns are gonna change anything to do with the project.
Okay, so then tonight we'll assume lead agency, and we'll just make referrals to lead.
Do you, you have to vote on that or no?
I think we should.
Yes, we should.
Okay.
Do we need a motion first? I think Art made a motion, I'll second.
Okay, one sec, sorry. Motion for lead agency, an unlisted action.
Yes.
An unlisted action. Sam's second, Alan, or, sorry. Clifford Buford's recused. Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Cowb?
Yes.
John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Okay, so unlisted lead agents, unlisted action. Are we circulating or does your office circulate? We've just been down this road?
Yeah.
So, wondering.
Would you like me to draft the notice of intent for lead agency and send it to you?
Yep.
I can do that.
Okay. So.
Go ahead.
The engineer, peak engineering is drafting the lead agency form for us, sending to our office, to Sarah. Then Sarah, we've been here before, so Sarah will be circulating this to every other agency involved.
Yes, that's correct.
Our office, planning board, whatever date that becomes.
Yes, and I will send it to you in work. That way, if you want to change anything, just because I send it to you doesn't mean.
You're sure, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Whatever you need to change or whatever.
So the last three seeker actions, we saw it outside council.
Yeah.
Do we need to do that for this?
No, I don't think so, because this is, this is a.
It's simple enough.
And I, I will just mention a lot of, typically, you know, if there is a solar rush patrol plan, a stormwater plan, you might have an engineer look at it. It is going to the DEP for review and approval, so.
If it comes back from one of the agencies.
So there is, and you're gonna look at it, yeah.
If it comes back from one of the agencies with a problem, then you're gonna have to review it.
Yes, and I expect a four-page comment letter to come back, so, yeah.
Okay, so we've taken some decisions today. The next steps are the referrals, the circulation.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just exhausted. Can we have a public, can we have a public hearing on the special use permit site plan review without?
We have to get back the information to the other agencies, yes.
Oh, it has to be after the thirty days? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so in the meantime, I can make the changes to widen that road.
We can refer to county in the meantime, which is, truthfully, they need a week before us. So we always get hung up waiting for their response too. So it's kind of great.
When do you have to get that out to them, like, two weeks before their meeting?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you think it'd be worth me sending you revised, revised plans or not?
That this board hasn't seen?
Yeah, with the twenty-foot wide road instead. I mean, so I gotta get the heights on the zoning table and change the road to twenty feet.
The road she said originally they're gonna expand to fifteen has to be to twelve in each one.
And point that out on the plan so that's really clear.
So, so from basically here, as it comes up through here, it's just kind of a ten-foot wide driveway. It's a lap top driveway, so we propose to widen it and then put in these one-car parking spaces here.
For the cabins.
So this would essentially, you know, be a turnaround point, and this would be a turnaround point. I don't think we're over five hundred feet from this to here, but we can definitely make it twenty feet wide. So we had a detail on there showing, you know, widening it to fifteen. We'll just change that to twenty and.
What's the advantage?
It's that fire apparatus road has to have fire.
To pass each other.
The fire, emergency vehicles have to be twenty feet.
Yeah.
This is your newly trained zoning office.
And is it gonna be asphalt, gravel?
It should be asphalt, yes.
A lot of impervious area.
Yeah, not, I'm trying to think how much above. Not quite twenty-five percent of what's there already. Like, it wasn't more than twenty-five percent of what's already there for all the buildings and the road widening, so it's not too much more. And if they do decide not to go with foundations on the house, on the cabins, we don't have to consider that impervious either, according to the DEP, so.
Thank you.
Talking into doing.
Anything else we need to do today?
Well, just to recap, so to submitting something different to county that they haven't seen, I don't think. Well, if it's just the twenty-foot wide road, do you see what she was saying there? What we, what we're sending, referring to county is what you're seeing here, but we're gonna add the twenty-foot wide road.
Yeah, or, I mean, they might comment on it.
That's all, I just want to make sure you're okay with that.
But that'll be the only change.
Okay, if you're okay with that. So we have to have a motion to refer to county, and that's it.
Can I get a motion?
So vote.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So would we be seeing, we're probably not seeing you in December.
Um, well.
If we wait the thirty, we have to wait the thirty days to run out, and essentially.
Could you schedule the public hearing even if it's close to the thirty days? Because then.
That's the board's decision, I don't.
Because then you would get all the comments back before the public hearing. The thirty days would run out before the public hearing, which would be in January.
It's for the board, I'm sorry, I can't decide for them.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I do, that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I get, right, you can't hold the public hearing until they have their thirty days to respond. But if, if you schedule it in December for the public hearing in January, they'll have your county comments back, the thirty days will have passed, and then that's it.
So you're saying that in December for them to set the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, sorry.
Well, the summer meeting's only twenty-eight days away. It's the eighth of December.
Right, so you can't set the public hearing at this meeting for that.
Correct. We agree.
But you, we can in December. You don't have to be here for them to set a public hearing then.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
So you'll have that on our agenda to take in action.
I, I guess you won't, we won't be seeing you in December, but we will set the public hearing.
Twenty-four hours time.
Yeah, but we have time. They're not having.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we done?
I think so. Um, so we'll be in touch with the lead agent and referral county.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and yet, yes, you can, sounds like you can send me the revised for the referral.
Yeah, and that way, I'll get them to be able to take up, send to the, for review, or make the changes.
Yeah, they should be meeting, they should be meeting till December first, and so we'll be okay.
Okay.
We'll give it to them at the time, county.
Okay, yeah, December tenth, okay, perfect.
So we'll be all right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Was this yours? Did you hand this one?
I just need one for county. It's for you, or me, I don't care.
You got yours back?
I do have mine back.
Okay.
I just need one of the short forms for county.
I'll see.
Okay. Do you want it? I'll keep it because I think you want it for a good file. Can I keep an EAF, very short form for county? So just to make life easier, I'm gonna take Shaniquan in away, off the desk, is that good? That's it. Can I take that from you, just to make the lives easier in the next applicant? Could I take Shaniquan?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Now, this is the Miller Road lot line. No, subdivision, sorry. And can I pass out these to the board, let's say? Miller Road lot line, I'm in subdivision, I don't know.
Thank you.
Nothing for you, Joanne? They have six. Do you mind if we have one more?
Uh, sure, sure.
All right, sure, sure. Joanne, do you have one more?
We haven't heard this.
So I think there were two requested changes to the plans from when I was here before, and one was to indicate the setbacks, and the other one was to indicate the, the slope, the driveway slope. So our man Alan has done that for you, for us, so you should see that indicated there. And we also got a, just to review, we had made a sort of late in the game change to have our three-bedroom septic system basically split between the main house and then the little guest cottage space. And so we were waiting on the revised approval from the DEP and, or the board call. So we have that now, which I think.
Yes, we'll distribute it. You all have it copied.
And I think that brings us up to where we're at.
So the entrance to this is all at the very end of Miller Road at this?
Yes. So Miller Road, it comes, it approaches its dead end, and Beaver Kill Road goes off to the right, and then we are on the left going downhill.
So it's the very end of?
Exactly.
Just the dead end.
Exactly. Yeah.
They've indicated the driveway slope. I remember that was a question last time.
Can I just ask again, what was the reason for dividing the lots?
Yeah, well, for one thing, we wanted to, we were, wanted to have an outdoor, like a garage type of space, number one. We are also intending this as our new home without our children.
This would be.
Yeah, exactly, and, but we also do not want our children to feel entirely neglected. So we want to make sure we have spaces for them. And, and we wanted to basically make a, just a smaller real house. We were just trying to make it kind of really shrink down our.
Our present house feels kind of ridiculous with the two of us, so.
It's too big.
Yeah, yeah, so that was really the, that was the whole impetus, because we really wanted to just like make it a very nice, pretty small house.
Highly efficient, single level.
Yeah.
Yeah. I assume at some point I won't be able to make it upstairs, so.
So you're sizing down.
Sizing down.
Sizing?
Yeah, we're not that good at it yet, but we're, we're working on it.
But there's a potential for, for selling this property then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is definitely a potential.
Is there a problem with the right of way once you don't own the property anymore? You would have to have a right of way.
Yeah, we're gonna be making sure that we got the proper easements in there for, I mean, obviously, we've got like the easement for the, for the power and all of that business, but yes, we'll be making sure that we have, we don't have to set an overhaul.
There's no other way in, I guess.
No.
Can I make a suggestion when you do that? Consider a road maintenance agreement for the first part.
They have it.
Oh, we have one. We've got it, but we.
They submitted that last time.
So there's like a very sharp turn right in the driveway, right opposite the existing house?
Versus pavement?
After, after the blacktop ends.
Right there.
Is this, is this because it's really not used at that point?
I, I think it's kind of exaggerated, honestly. Yeah, let's see if we're at the same line.
It looks like you are.
Well, where it says pavement at the next junction.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, that is actually a funny, it wouldn't really be that sharp. I haven't really noticed that, to be honest. But, uh, but no, it's, it's just coming around really, the reason it makes a turn there of any significance is just because the hill slopes up.
Yeah, the hill starts to, right there.
So kind of wrapping around that hill.
Yeah. Yeah, if you saw the, the lines showing the, the way the hill goes, you'd see that the hill goes up significantly.
It's sort of a little long right there.
I guess that's actually, yes.
But right now, no, nobody needs to drive along there, so you're not used to.
Or that, right now, our driveway just stops right at the end. No, or the, right now, our driveway just stops right at the end of the paved area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would have to be re, redone, uh, with this whole project.
Exactly.
So I'm correct in assuming that last time, we asked for two things, one is the prevent for the wastewater, and one was the grade on the, on the road here? And they both in.
So this, this is for this septic?
Yes, yes. Hey, I have questions.
Can I?
We didn't put through the G I S last time, did we?
No.
All right, anybody want to go through it? I'll read this time. Uh, the short environmental assessment form, number one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of planned local law or new administration, administrative rule or regulation? No. Does proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency? Uh, yes, how Shandaken planning board, also county department of health, New York City Department of Environmental Protection. Total acreage of the site of proposed action, fourteen point nine seven nine acres. Total acres to be physically disturbed, less than, um, one. Total acreage project site, any contiguous properties owned or controlled by the applicant or project sponsor, fourteen point nine seven nine acres. Check all land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action, forest, rural, non-agricultural, and residential. Is the proposed action, A, permitted, permitted use under the zoning regulations, yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Is proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoining a state listed critical environmental area, no. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels, no. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action, no. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle rooms available on or near the site of the proposed action, no. Does proposed action need or exceed the state energy code requirements? The code action will exceed these requirements, describe design features and technologies. So yes, all construction will comply with twenty twenty building code of New York State. Will the proposed action connect to existing public private water supply, no. Project involves the development of a drilled well for the proposed residents' water supply. Number eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater facilities, no. Project involves the construction of onsite sewage disposal system for the proposed residents' wastewater disposal. Uh, twelve, does the project site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the national or state register of storied places? That has been determined by the commissioner of New York State, Officer Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, to be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places, no. If the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for the archaeological sites of the New York State Preservation Office of Archaeological Site inventory, no. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? Yes.
We have a pond there.
No. Is proposed action physically altered or encroached into any existing wetland or water body, no. Identify the typical habitat types that occur or are likely to be found on the project site, check all and apply, forest, wetland, suburban, rural, and successional. Does the site of proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? Timber rattlesnake. Is the project site located in the hundred-year flood plan, plain, no. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Yes. Will the stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties, no. Stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems, runoff and storm drains, no. Proposed residents' roof and driveway will produce minor sheet flow, non-point source runoff. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Example, retention pond, waste lagoon, dam, no. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining properties been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility, no. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste, no. All agreed?
Yep.
Should there be, yes, on the timber rattlesnakes?
Bird? Other timber rattlesnakes?
It's the same, yeah, obviously, yes.
Any other questions, any comments, ready to move forward? Looking for a motion to, um, schedule a public hearing.
So moved.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, this, I looked at your exemption with a county and subdivision within five hundred feet of the road with more than five lots, and this is only two, so you don't have to refer.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just very excited about that. Very hard.
Let's do, um, this is the December meeting, let's, let's, you guys wanna do it a little early? Six forty-five, so we can get home a little earlier?
Yeah.
Six forty-five on, anyone know the date offhand?
Number eight.
Number eight. Thank you, have a good evening.
Do you want one of your maps back?
Yep.
We need only four.
Here's one.
Yes, yes.
Oh, did I take five from you? Yeah.
We need one.
Now, Peter didn't sign your name here.
One, two, three.
I would sign all of those, he didn't, he didn't want them.
No, I think it's the chair will. No, the, the chair will. Only, but, do, do you want to sign this now, no?
No, after, after, yeah, no, we have not till we've, it's done, till it's approved.
If we talk about the answer plan, I have a hand down.
Okay, so then now, this would be back to the communication section in the agenda.
So, you know, Sam's term expires at the end of this year. We submitted, Sarah put an ad in the paper for new applicants, but, uh, Sam, would you like to continue your?
I'd like to be considered, yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
We still need on the bones, we still need on your bones.
Um, so the board meets in December, and you can make your recommendation, you have to wait the thirty days, I think, for the ad.
When did it go out?
Um, I don't, it was twenty-seven, I think.
So.
Is the, is the.
So we can in December, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't, we can't, December, okay.
And then I brought the Woodstock brewery special use permit, I talked to George Nier, the two, just saying, like, we just looping him in to the parking being something, and he agreed to, to like, on his end, speak to them, um. Anyway, so let me show you what, you asked for it to be here, right, to review?
Yes.
And one thing, right off, I noticed on the map was they did put the entrance and the exit signs to be labeled for the mapping, but I don't think it's as clear. I don't know that it was even done, was it?
You made up the parking lot?
In place, there's nothing there.
Right, and it's, it's, that is certainly one thing for sure, that needs to get enforcement on, as, as making sure that they do put that up. The application is commercial use of space in existing commercial mini mall, that's what the dated application in twenty seventeen says. And then the resolution, um, by resolution of the planning board is determine the operation of brewery route twenty-eight, S B L twenty-five point one dash one dash three point one one zero is permitted use in the C L I zoning district, and therefore is a further determine that the application for special, for special permit be approved with the conditions as follow, proper approvals from D E C, D E P, U C, D O H, N Y S L A, and N Y D O T. And then, when I get to their home file, which I call it a home file, there is occupancy loads, and it, when they go into their construction portion, they have their C of O, conversion of storage and office area to tap room for customer service, installation of new doors. The permitted use of occupancy is brewery, restaurant, bar, canning, and office space. So it's got mixed occupants class, which allows its occupant load, obviously, to vary. And then there is a list, I swear, I thought I saw it, of what is allowed, maybe I was wrong, or maybe it's a mess. These files get really thick and confusing, but I thought I saw a, a sign on, on the temporary, maybe? Anyways, is there any other information in here that you'd like to see, while I'm looking for what I thought I saw? Oh, yeah, here we go, so there's some inspection notes done, um, seems pretty straightforward for the temporary C of O that they obtained, but then, when you get into their max occupancy, they have eighty tables and chairs, a hundred and twenty with chairs only, a hundred and eighty in standing only, and it's all based on interior numbers, there's no exterior, obviously, then.
Just based on square footage.
Yeah, and then that makes use. I have to, I was testing on it today, which I passed, by the way, anyways, um, so, yeah, I think it's a revisit of the expansion, the size.
Right.
Don't you feel like, from a zoning standpoint, like, the size is tripled probably, whatever it is? And then, and then clearly, in their, in the submitted, um, site plan to you all, the thing that jumped out at me was that they did label the entrance and exit, but then with George and the police department is, the parking, you know, is becoming.
Yeah, but you have to remember that the brewery is not responsible for that, the owners of the mall are.
The entrance and exit signs?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was presented to you all, it's like, we're also gonna make this happen, I don't know, cause it was on here, so I'm not sure, okay.
But he should be approached about the entrance and exit signs.
Right.
Yeah, they were, that was something that was discussed.
The owners, right.
Yeah.
I know Warren discussed it with them.
So, does that, um, make you happy? I don't know, I don't know, what do you want?
Pretty happy.
Okay, good.
But they did say on the permit, when we did it, that they could run a restaurant?
Yeah, she just read that.
It was, the, this, no.
Is that the C of O, or is that the special permit?
Yeah, the special permit was just the, um, hold on one second, the special use permit does not really specify, I think, which I think you guys do great, but really spec, like, I honestly think, right, we've got it, I, it, it just says a, um, permitted in a C L I zoning district, and therefore determined.
That's called commercial light industry, C L I.
An action indicated taken below, and the approval with conditions, and it was just the approvals from the other agencies, it wasn't, you know, that you operate with like this, and, you know.
Right, but, you know, I remember that they said that they were only gonna have.
Sure, it's the same thing we're gonna see, see with railways, rail explorers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they only were gonna have bathroom, you know, like fried stuff.
Yeah, but everybody who comes here says things to us that are not in the documents and are not necessarily accurate. Like, yeah, I'm just gonna, you need the sink to wash my brushes off.
Right.
And you need the bathroom, cause I like to take baths while I'm painting.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, it turns into something else.
Of course, of course.
If we don't have it in the, in writing, it's, doesn't matter what they say to us, so.
I know, so.
Bless them, learn.
Yeah.
You could always go back to the tapes.
Right, which we did with rail explorers.
But I think you should just approach them about the parking.
Yeah, and I, and it was nice, you know, I said, I said, hey, George, guess what, and he said, you know, I feel the same way, let's both work on this together, cause he also sees it.
Well, it's not just the parking, it's that they expanded to the outside there. Where did they get permission to do that, only from the owners, not from us.
Right, right.
They also expanded to the side, didn't they?
That's what I mean.
They took over the second.
They took over the second.
They, oh, yes, yes, they expanded, yeah.
Interior.
Interior, right.
Yeah, but technically, if, if there was another company there, they would be parking too, so it's.
Yeah, but they expanded and they changed the use, they went next door into whatever used the permit, and now they have a, um, change of use.
You know, it's really like, it's, it is a problem, I, I'm gonna say, it is a problem in Shandaken, that if, unless the office is just squeezing them at the neck, like, that happens all the time.
Yeah.
The church, change of use, the outfitters that you brought up, change of use, uh, somebody wants to sell the mattress barn, well, guess what, it's residential, so we have to, we are sticking on top of it to say, you cannot just become whatever you want.
Who wants to sell that mattress barn down there?
You know, you're right though, Sarah, what you're saying.
Yeah, it is, it's from the office that, like, it's not for you to have to constantly stay on top of, it's the office that deals with these permits and with, you know, even the pharmacy.
Yep.
The pharmacy is now a teaching.
That was a total change of use.
In this case, at least, it's like, in, it, yes, it's a change of use for that space, but it's an extension of a use in that, you know, in that plaza already, it's.
Because it, it matters, though, it matters within, like, occupancy loads, and it matters within fire safety protection.
And parking.
Yeah, and parking, and it really is, I think, a downfall that's happened in the office over the last, how, I don't know, forever, I don't know, you know what I mean?
You're probably right.
I mean, it behooves him to sort all that parking stuff out, because, see, I mean, he doesn't want an accident there, you know, like, people.
And then, honestly.
Traffic flow is smoother and safer, that's better for everybody.
The other thing is, I am at a land, I'm at a standstill with finding anything on the diner in terms of meeting with you, because I'm guessing it was always a diner, so there was never, they never probably came to you.
Yeah, it was always a diner, but they were here.
They were.
Richie Stokes had inspected it and did everything, he was the zoning enforcement officer there.
He, he, they came for a special use permit to change when Mike took over this and calls it the Phoenisha diner?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what we don't, uh, yeah, that's what I can't find.
What year was that, do you remember?
I think we were running into some bit of a problem.
It was always called the Phoenisha diner.
Exactly, that's why I don't think there's a file for, sorry, our.
No, no, that's okay, is when people make changes to the business, they should come back and make an amendment to the site plan.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That's, that's where we're running into this problem.
And you know, sometimes that's a twenty-year gap in some businesses, and sometimes it's a two-year pandemic, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know?
Either way.
And that, but that's where I think there's the bird, like, the, the office needs to also stay on top of it, you know? And especially like when things are selling, you know, I try, like, with municipal searches and stuff, like, yeah, you might go by Kate Lacy's Meadows, but she didn't use, since two thousand and one, she never had those trailers back there, so don't think you're going to, you know? It's just a constant, like.
Right now is, is a very crazy time anyway, this is quite unusual
Yeah.
to have a deluge where your office is just being bombarded all the time, every day.
Well, those darn breweries are the worst.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm Green County.
So that's what I have there, and then any grant money you can come up with to change of our special use permits filing system would be great, because it's by last name. So imagine how painful that is.
Yeah. Because you do it by SBL, right?
We do everything by SBL, but special use permits were always put in as last names, and ZBA. Both planning board and ZBA are filed by last name of the applicant. So you, you should, I mean, nineteen eighty-four, the cows did something. Okay, well, I got to know that that's who owned it in eighty-four. You know what I mean, like, it's.
It gives history.
It is, a very great history. Well, you know, I called Cliff one day and I said, do you know the, whatever, it doesn't matter. No, remember when I didn't, I thought somebody had the same last name as you, because some file wasn't there by last name, and
Oh.
and it was related to you, yeah.
When was the last time our fees were raised?
Just in the last couple of years for permits. Yeah.
Yeah, they just got raised.
That just got raised, and it, it is a significant, I mean, I think it's really a tremendous difference. Because the minimum to do, I mean, you're in, it's about a hundred dollars to really get anything going.
Considering our salaries, I mean.
I know.
I know.
You could, you cut that out.
You're going to get less.
You mean, I owe them money?
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so that was that.
That was that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
This is closed?
Yes, closed.
We have a busy, we have a busy meeting next week, next month. We have no workshop, and then it's probably Christmas, right?
And then I think you're going to head up.
Do you guys want to wait till the New Year, do you comprehensive plan stuff?
Yes. Let me just hand out one piece of paper and then I'm leaving. I got one.
Good job, hand up, hand up your hand.
I'm going to lose it. I know, I've been told that I'm long-winded, so.
You are. There's no doubt about it.
All right, we just want to leave these there. This is what we talked about last time when I was long-winded. Now, now I'm sure.
Now we wrote it down.
Now I'm sure, but each one of you, take it home, take a look at it, come back, bring it to me again.
Is this the? Is this the survey?
This is the survey.
Oh, perfect.
This is the survey, it won't take long.
Yeah, I got, make sure. So cross out, add on?
Yes, cross out, sorry.
Okay, there's, there's some spots where I didn't cross the town out completely, so you'll know who it is, but we won't discuss that.
I like, I like the way you did this.
I spent quite a few hours here today downstairs, and I got the comprehensive plan real quick, I'm walking out from Woodstock. I got the comprehensive plan from Hurley, I got the comprehensive plan from New Falls. So I got three new comprehensive plans for us to review and pick out the good things to reevaluate.
Nice, thank you.
I'm tired, that was exhausting.
Our, the Asofas did their comprehensive plan again recently.
Yeah.
So you might want to look at that if you're, if you're ambitious.
Vivian, thanks for volunteering, for getting that for me.
I just had something that, I saw the, the survey that we did in the R comprehensive plan, and when I see numbers, I like to make them look graphical. So this is, I made them all with bar charts type of things.
Look at these in a bar?
So these are the.
Whoops, everybody?
Well, it just goes through the questions that were there, and you can see what was important, what people thought was important back then, what they didn't like, and so on and so forth.
You only got nine hamlets, actually you have eight. There are twelve in our town.
Uh, I don't, I didn't make this up.
Well, one of them's unknown, so. So you got eight? Both of them. And one unknown.
Well, see, Woodland Valley is really, I looked at the zip codes and the, the response rates were reasonable. So it wasn't loaded with people from.
Woodland Valley is not a hamlet.
It is, isn't it?
It is.
Twelve it is.
We have twelve.
Al, Bushville, Bushville. Sorry, I forgot.
Chendakin, Phoenisha, Vivian, the Mount Trumper.
Mount Trumper.
High Mount is there.
Is there, yeah.
The other Mount.
Well, we don't have to look at everything, but I noticed that one, everybody hates golf courses, that was.
Of course they did.
And spas.
Yeah, of course they did.
These poor folks are opening up a spa, but.
What was the year that, that comprehensive plan was done, the last one, two thousand and five?
I think that was.
Right in the middle of the Bel Air project. Of course they hated golf courses and spas.
Anyway, it, it's, it's a nice way to.
Great.
Now people are putting spas in their front rooms of their homes, putting Icelandic spas in their homes. People love spas now.
And as you said that night, this thing was high.
I think everyone's okay there, I think they're pretty busy always.
People just kept filling out those things and sending them in, all negative, negative, negative.
Oh yeah, golf courses, what do you not want to see in the town? Or what you do want to see in golf courses was the bottom. Maybe down with breweries.
Gambling.
The brew, I don't think they had breweries in two thousand and five yet. All right.
But building code enforcement got a fairly low mark even back then. Anyway.
I think you're about to make a motion to adjourn, John.
Yes, and I'll second it.
Did everybody got somebody?
No, no. Didn't I?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thanks. John, can you second that?
Uh, Joanne.
I did.
No, I will. You know, I will.
So, John, this was actually what people wanted, what people, how people rate the services that they already have.
I want to be here till midnight. On the comprehensive plan, but it was question number eight.
But what was the question?
You'd have to look at the comprehensive plan, I just summarized.
Oh, so this is in the, in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I just took the numbers and made a bar chart out of everything.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Thank you, goodnight.
Have a nice Thanksgiving, Sabrina.
I'm going to pay one, please. I don't, yeah, but I'm not going to sweep them, you know? Well, I'm, I'm.
It's important.
Revenus. No.
Where can you go?
South Carolina.
South Carolina?
Goodnight, 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 goodnight. I'm going to turn this off too, the new mic.
All right, whole wall in person.
So where, what are you doing these trainings?
Oh, yeah. And. And I, I'm probably worse than that. Well, no, I was. So, yeah. I know, it's a must. It is so hard. Like, this morning at three, there's twenty-five questions that took me.
I'm in the book.
Because you're just, you're just, so many maps, I don't think it's coming. But I'm doing it. The only time it feels comfortable that I don't talk about this when I'm at a family.
They pick up the golf.
But you certainly know what you're talking about. Well, I don't, you know, I have more of a understanding. The trace of pollution. And what you're talking about.